Good morning and welcome to the first Board of Selectment meeting of the calendar year 2018. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to today's board meeting. This is a public meeting, not a public hearing, although the Chair reserves the right to call upon any interested attendee to pose a question or make a comment on any item that is on the agenda today. There are copies of the meeting agenda as you come into the meeting room. Today we have participating our Selectman, John Tonner, telephonically. Mr. Tonner is recuperating from knee surgery at Nathaniel Witherell, and we wish him well. Hopefully you came through your morning therapy okay, John?
A little pain, but not the worst. Where?
Good, good. Okay, so a second item on the agenda is approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes. One of them is from the prior term. It was the November 30 minutes, the last meeting of the prior board. I would entertain any corrections, adjustments to those. John, do you have anything?
Nothing.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve those minutes as presented?
I've moved.
Is there a second?
I don't think I can second since I wasn't there.
Okay, I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions. So two, zero, one. And that is again, those are minutes from the prior board term. The second set of minutes are from our last meeting, which occurred on December 18th. Entertain any corrections, amendments to those minutes. I would point out one, Barbara, on page two, in reference to what is, it says F. Also on December 13th, the Athletic Field Utilization Committee, it's not a committee, it's really just a working group that will conclude, it's really just information gathering. If not, may I have a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
Aye, so move.
Second.
Okay, without objection. Item number three, updates. On January 2nd, I was pleased to administer the oath to John Kiernan to become Deputy Fire Marshal. This now brings that division up to full strength. John has a very diverse background. Not only has he been a firefighter, but he also was a police officer and has been integral part of the town's public safety force for a number of years. He began his career with the New York City Police Department in 1980, and we've been pleased to have him part of our town first responders, and we wish him well. We received a notification through our Conservation Commission that the Greenwich High School students were awarded a grant for a program called Recycle Connecticut.
... paperwork. I went back and I went through meeting minutes trying to see what I believe happened and, you know, I don't know who did it at the time. Somewhere in the early 2000s, there was a whole several-page revision to the permit parking ordinance in the code book. And I think, to be honest with you, what happened was it was just an omission by error. Someone forgot to move it over when the new pages of the code were printed, and that's why it's not in Unicode. Because if it wasn't on the pages that were sent to Unicode originally, it wouldn't have gotten in there. But I couldn't find any paperwork that actually legally through the Board of Selectmen removed that permit parking, which is why I believe it was just a clerical error.
So what you're saying, if I understand you correctly, is what you are asking us to do today, again, as akin to what we talked about earlier with the handicap parking, is conform the reality and the code, because you're saying the code doesn't match the reality. If we want to do anything other than that, that you're saying would have to go to planning and zoning.
Right. With the one exception being, like Mark mentioned, the visitor parking.
Visitor parking.
Coming to hour parking.
Okay.
Which is, you know, the signs say visitor now, but, you know, I mean, I could park there and go visit, you know, Chicken Joe's down the street, and how do you know I'm not a visitor?
To the extent that it gives you some level of comfort about what you can and cannot do, you have wide authority to regulate public parking and use of public streets. This planning and zoning condition, totally weird, right? I've never seen one like this for public on-street parking historically. Now, the Board of Ed is a public entity, and the school's a public school, so if they want to use, we would not permit this if, you know, they built a bowling alley on Hillside Road, and in the bowling alley, people said, "We want to consider part of the public street to be part of our parking inventory," right? This only kind of even happened because I'm sure the Board of Ed is a public entity, and, you know, there are some times that they, P&amp;Z talks about parking or addresses parking, and you have to have adequate parking. Planning and zoning doesn't have the authority to say you can use, you know, have exclusive loose of public street parking. That's just, that's unusual, right? And there's, the downtown district, for example, planning and zoning has different rules for parking because they recognize that there's an existing parking, public parking inventory that people can use in the parking district, but this is, and this is an unusual condition.
And that's '95, you said?
'95. Twenty-two years ago.
Going back to the visitor, and thank you for, so the high school has parking enforcement people, right? They've been deputized to write tickets and so forth. So recognizing that it's visitor parking, and it's hard to denote who's a visitor and who's not, at a minimum, if you've got the tag as for student, and you're in visitor, are you in violation?
No. Well, currently, nobody knows. There's no answer to that question, right?
Because maybe you're a student who doesn't have classes that day, who goes to the school for an hour to do something.
Well, even if you are.
I know, right? We have no way of knowing that.
You're right, they're visiting at that point. Even if I have classes, I may be visiting, right? I visited a lot of classes when I was in school.
And, you know, it's a definition that's hard to define, right? How do we define visitor?
Short of doing what has been done, and we put on hiatus elsewhere, the previous director in the board, residential parking, right?
Right.
There would be nothing precluding this board from segmenting a portion of this and say, "We want to designate that residential parking." Again, hard to enforce in many respects, too, because we assign what a placard to a couple, each household.
Well, it would have to support the school property.
Again, residential parking is something that...
But we couldn't, that's a good point, Melissa. So we couldn't do it within that P&amp;Z designated area. So it couldn't be with, oh, my, it couldn't be within what you've...
Colored on that map.
It could not be.
Well, not without P&amp;Z's permission theoretically.
It couldn't be within the purple? Or is that...
Right. If you wanted to make the green section, we'd have to see how many visitor spaces they put in the parking lot versus how many are on the street, and whether or not they could afford to lose those.
Right.
But again, technically, right now, the signs don't even say Greenwich High School's visitor parking only, they just say visitor parking.
Yeah, but we couldn't, just to follow along what Peter was saying, to make sure I understand, we could not, you were telling us, take half of this purple and just say, "Okay, that's..."
You could, but I don't, you know, to be honest with you, I don't know that the, what the effect would be, I don't know, there'd be a fight.
Well, here's the thing, if you were to do that...
Melissa, can you come up to the microphone?
Yes, sorry.
The problem is, if you were to do that, Board of Ed would be put in a position where they would now be in violation of that condition.
The P&amp;Z condition.
Right. Because that P&amp;Z condition never changed, even with the MISA approval and approvals they've gotten since, that's an existing condition that's never been removed from that approval.
Yeah, it seems to me that's the...
So, you know what I'm saying? So like Board of Ed would then be in violation, and then would, they would have to go back to planning and zoning and say, "Board of Selectmen wanted to make this change."
At bottom, the safe, easy way to do something here is to talk to P&amp;Z and see if that can be worked out somehow, if we want to do something.
Sure. But I would include Board of Education in that conversation if it were me.
Right, no, that's good. Good advice. So I think we certainly want to afford Ms. Cole and Ms. Dempsey an opportunity. I would suggest, since we do have a concern about this, I think we, we'd like to talk to P&amp;Z about it, because in fairness to you folks, it's something that you can't answer for, they did it, but I'd like to have a conversation with Katie. I presume that would be the person, we would start with Kate DeLuca and have her share with us.
Yeah, I would like to do that and pursue this because there is, there is the issue you have legitimately and properly raised, the inconsistency between the code and what we're doing, and then there is also the question, at least in my mind, of what's the right thing to be doing here?
Okay, so you're gonna...
So we'll defer on this one.
Not act on this?
On this one, but I do want to give, right, I'd like to give the ladies an opportunity to comment. So just, we have a desire to speak with planning and zoning to understand specifically how they went about basically conditioning those spaces through their approvals for exclusive student parking during those prescribed times versus a more pliable application where, you know, anybody could park that fell within the, whether it's two hours or so forth. But you're welcome to come up and...
Thank you. I didn't exactly prepare a statement, but, so I'm Elizabeth Dempsey, 21 Hillside Road. I'm also well-known by maybe the policemen as having the widest driveway front for which generally parents of students park in the bottom of my driveway to release and pick up their kids. So anyway, I wanted to thank you all for letting, for bringing this up. You know, I thank you for your job in looking at how to, you know, the town's needs, and Mark, and Melissa, what a great thorough job to go through this, and so I really do applaud your efforts. So the questions I have is, I do, and I'm not an expert on municipal law or state law or parking, but I would raise a couple of questions and a couple of points that, Mark, you mentioned it was highly unusual for P&amp;Z to be involved. I think the way us, we as residents look at it is that the town, when it took the property under eminent domain to build the high school, had it zoned, and to this day, it's zoned as a residential property. So there is a zoning factor in this. We, on the other side of the street, are taxed as a residential zone. Some of us pay upwards of $70,000 of residential taxes for being there and being a citizen, to which the rights of the street have value. I do want to acknowledge that this is not necessarily about me having a parking spot on the street. It's to the larger aspect of what the town and the Board of Ed is looking at for that spot, for that location, for that property. So in that vein, this is why we're speaking up. It's not about having spots for a luncheon. So, and I think that you really need to look at it in the larger context, and you look at it in the context of all the plans and cardinal feasibility and how that property is being used. So that's in the vein of what I speak. So I would wonder that P&amp;Z has an interesting view on this, and what is residential? The fact that it was agreed upon that there would never be used for commercial use, and the fact that regularly the town sells its space and its fields for outside users, and there's a church that operates every Sunday on that location in a residential zone, to me is a concern. And if you are, if parking is a value, and I'll be honest with all the letters I get in my mailbox every year requesting from students who, trust me, I totally understand the Board of Ed's point of view, I understand these students need to get to jobs, to internships, they need to have, they need to have transportation, despite the fact that's rather galling with the high taxes we pay, that we provide empty buses going back and forth in carbon footprint and idling and all that. We understand that there is, there can be a true need. And let's face it, what wasn't also brought up is that there is a gross lack of parking in that cramped location for the high school. And I'm not sure why we're not bringing that up. P&amp;Z and the MISA Certificate of Occupancy discussed the designated need for parking spaces on that site that haven't been met, and the CO from, and I could be wrong, but I understand that the CO has not been completed because there is a lack of parking. So when you look at parking on the street that is being used to supplement a deficit, which I'm surprised is not being brought up, this is a context in which we think that this really needs to be looked at closely. If parking is a value, and you're giving away that value to a select group of students, to me, that is a giving of value, and that, again, reinforces the fact that it's a commercial zone. So if you are taxing us on a residential basis, and we are living in a, what I would call a under-the-cloak commercial zone in a way, it's frustrating. Because everyone gets value of that site, but not us, and we're taxed to the highest hilt that the town gifts, town gives. And yet, the conditions in which we live across, without going into a long string, are not residential. So that, so I am very interested in the whole P&amp;Z take on that. It has been said that in the eminent domain documents, that there would never be onsite parking amongst a host of other issues that have consistently been violated. So I think from your point of view, or the town's point of view, and our point of view is, what is the giving of a public street? The other issue I would bring up is safety, and I know this is not germane to the actual giving of a parking spot, but I wanted to highlight, of course, I've lived there for 17 years, and yesterday I went to go pick up a neighbor and go from around the corner from the high school so that, near the north parking lot, and come back down. And once again, we barely could make it down the street during dismissal, which I avoid like a plague, because there is parking, and it's totally jammed. Then there's double parking because parents are picking up, and then when you try to drive, the only way you can drive down that street to get from the north of Hillside to the post road is by going into the east opposite direction lane. It is like running the gauntlet, and I am a driving mother pro. And I, even yesterday, I was, we were late for a meeting, and we were like, we were literally going like this. And Mark is right, there was an incident, it was 10 years ago, there was something, it was at least, or at least there was a prior incident, maybe something else that you're referring to, where literally I had policemen sitting in my living room begging me to change the shape of my driveway because of the safety and people getting injured crossing the road. So it's something you all need to consider, parking is an aspect of it because there is parking on the road. It's pretty galling for me when I was asked, because people park in the bottom of my driveway, and they do turnarounds, or they wait for their child to come across the street, which is a hazard, and there's two and sometimes three layers of cars going across the way, to have a Greenwich policeman sitting there on his cellphone every single day, watching his cellphone until the moment that the buses are all there, and his job is to let the buses go. And all the signs that we referred to of no stopping and, no stopping on the east side are because of the accidents that happened, but there's no enforcement of it. And I've often said, and we've talked to the police and said, "You're welcome to sit in my driveway, you're welcome to adjudicate this sign that you, or to enforce this sign that says no stopping." And there's been no response on that. It's a separate issue, but the parking aspect complicates it, and it would be sad if we couldn't at least mention that to you. I would encourage you, and maybe I'll take pictures and videos of it, encourage you to look at it when you consider the parking. I think that was part of why maybe it was agreed that parking would never be on the So I guess my question wouldn't zoning and safety be an aspect in this if you're taking the street and re-codifying it to give to the students? And I guess I would also ask, sorry, in this era of high taxes, diminishing returns, if you're giving it, what are you giving back to us on our taxes? That would be a question I would ask. If you're taking the street, and you have taken the street, and we don't have rights to it, you know, is the elephant in the room that this is really operating, this is not really a residential zone, and are we permitted to not operate in a residential zone? I mean, I don't know about selling my house in the current environment with toxicity across the street, arsenic, all of that, and then the mayhem that happens on that street. Is it, do I live in a residential zone, and should I be taxed appropriately? I have a real problem with that. So that's where I would ask about the zoning aspect, and the giving of value, and the giving away of the street.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Hi, I'm Ashley Cole, I live at 11 Hillside Road. You all know me. I would like to shout out to Captain Cordick, who has been most responsive to me, and who is obviously an excellent town professional. Thank you. I appreciate everything you've done. We have a parking problem and a traffic problem on Hillside Road, obviously. Something needs to be done, but what does not need to be done is to codify the current situation and just making it permanent. And as, the street is currently an open public street, and I think the street should belong to the neighbors and the residents. Elizabeth brought up most of the issues here that we have on Hillside Road, but our property values are at stake. Our quality of life is at stake, because every day it takes me 20 minutes to drive 50 yards. It's untenable, and it's not...
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are you in that much pain that you...
I know I am.
This is adding to it, the pain.
Pain? What is pain?
Pain, not from the surgery. Yes, but not from the surgery.
Thanks, Melissa.
Okay. And second to last, but not least, is this adjustment to an existing regulation. This particular piece of physical property is on Steamboat Road, and what amounts to the street frontage in front of what used to be a surface parking lot for Monero's Restaurant, if you can remember that, back in the day, south of Oneida Drive. Now there's a giant set of condominiums there. When it was the surface parking lot, the street was posted, no parking, stopping, or standing, mainly to support the driveways for the parking lot. When they did the construction and constructed the condominium complex down there, they converted it temporarily to parking for staging and to support construction. Now the condominiums are fully developed, and the streets reverted to a no parking, stopping, or standing zone, but the people that live in the condominiums down there say, "Well, gosh, you know, we like that parking, it's convenient, and there's really no reason for it not to be parking, it's plenty of street width, there's, again, since the condition is no longer a surface parking lot with a bunch of driveways, the driveways to the condo actually are on Oneida Drive around the corner. There's no reason that we shouldn't be utilizing this as public parking. All this proposal's doing is, at the request of the residents that live there, marking it to be public parking, like the adjacent public parking on the other side of Oneida Drive in front of the other condos where the actual restaurant used to be." If that all makes sense.
Okay, so this would become two-hour parking?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
So move.
Okay, it's a move, seconding?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If you get them to sign copies, I'll arrange for John to receive them, if you want.
You have to take out a warranty bond to get these papers, because we've got to make sure they get back to you.
Right. Have warranty. Maybe code issues if we don't get them to the right thing.
And the very last thing for discussion only is really, these, all of these things are, again, kind of low-hanging fruit, adjustments that, you know, were either in the process with the former director, or things that have come up in the last 30 days or so. Moving forward, I don't know, I don't know if you guys want me to show up here at every meeting and slug this out with you guys for two hours in public session, if, you know, there are many, many code corrections, 90% of which are totally non-controversial. Hillside Road, obviously controversial, shouldn't be because it's the existing condition, but I get the idea that, you know, we want to do things in a way that is reasonable and transparent, I get that. We do need to do something with the 25th, because, I mean, at this point, it's a little untenable not having necessarily an ordinance to support the existing condition, because I really don't know what to tell the cops and parking enforcement officers to do. We have something out, I don't want to take the signs down to put them up again in two weeks, but, you know, and then I certainly don't want it just to become general unregulated parking. I think that would have the neighbors even more mad.
Understand, but it's been this way for 22 years, apparently, so another few weeks isn't really going to...
Well, it's actually only been this way since 2012. I mean, it's...
And there's a sign ordinance from 1991.
Which I assume we could all continue to operate under...
That's what I said when I made the comment.
The problem is, it's just not in the actual book today.
I think to your broader question, though, I would, I would desire, if you're reviewing these and you're finding the inconsistency, bring them forward, and we'll just punch through them. And, you know, what you're really demonstrating is that you've established a process which hopefully can be institutionalized, and that everybody who's, needs to know, particularly if it's law, who has to facilitate, they do it, because it's not fair to everybody, your work, that you do this, and then it doesn't get codified. But that would be my suggestion.
Well, this also folds into the idea of the long-term prospect for what happens to parking going forward, right? We know that there's some changes afoot, but I think from a governmental standpoint, we haven't decided what those are going to be. I mean, my job is stations-keeping, as it were, right? I'm not changing the world downstairs. That said, this kind of easy stuff we can fix, but somebody really does sort of need to take the two- or three-year view on how we're actually going to get all of Section 14 of the Charter straightened up.
Well, if you want to recommend to me or to the board that you think we need to hire someone to come in to support that review, I think it's been done in other areas of the government. I would, I would support that, so that it gets done and done correctly, you know, because you can do...
I don't know if we need to hire somebody to do, maybe we need to hire some help, maybe to, you know, if, something as easy as summer intern is summer, to go out and verify some of these existing conditions and look at stuff, I mean, it's...
I would support that and have it under Melissa, or you, or I both, or whomever, but I think we should do it...
I think what's, there's like, there's more than just one, one issue with the code, right? So one of the things that I've already done, and Mark has with him his copy, I didn't bring my copy, but that's all of the schedules that are, that, all the schedules in Chapter 14 are...
163 Vegas.
That's them, right there, okay? And they all...
And they all, you know, are referenced in a particular section of that, of the code. I've already gone through my printed copy of all of that, looking just for errors in the written code. So things like, you know, coming across the Penn Central Railroad designation, right? Or, you know, the Bruce Place running from, you know, Greenwich Avenue to Mason Street, which it doesn't do anymore. Things like that, which are easily identifiable in the written code for correction. Then we've discovered other things, whether it be from a call from a resident or just in being out and saying, "Oh, okay, that's resident parking," and then looking at the residential parking code and saying, "Oh, that's funny. It's signed for residential parking, but it's not actually in the book." So there are some things that we've cross-referenced between the code and real life, handicap parking being one of them that we fixed today. And then there's a third part that needs to be done, which is the hardest part, which is finding out what's out there in real life that's not in the code at all, that we have no record of. Because if we have no record of it, it's hard to know where to look, right? You really, at that point, need to inventory the town and look for these parking signs wherever they may be and ensure that they are where they're supposed to be in the code. And that's, I think, probably the hardest part, but, you know, it does take putting someone in a car and driving around and looking at all of them and saying, "Okay, yeah, that one is in the code, that one's not," and then a decision that someone needs to make as to whether or not it should be.
We can pick stuff off, you know, one at a time. I, you know, I leave here today and I drive to lunch and I park in front of my favorite deli on Pebblewick Road, and I see there's a sign in front of it, a town or Greenwich sign, that says 15-minute parking.
Mean that if six months from now, you manage to have a working conversation with Board of Education and Planning and Zoning, and they decide to make changes to the student parking that's out there now, it can't be codified a different way at that time. The issue at hand is the signs are out there now, this is what's happening, and the visitor parking especially needs to be converted to something enforceable rather than what it is now. And the ordinance that's in front of you today would do that. It would change a certain portion that's out there that's posted for no parking to no parking, stopping, or standing. It's already signed for no parking. It would adjust the visitor parking that's out there now to a two-hour enforceable parking, and it would put in the permit parking that is really supposed to be in the book anyway and only came out because of a clerical error. I mean, technically, if you don't sign it, we revert back to the 1991 ordinance that was signed. So codifying it today is not saying you agree with it necessarily or that it couldn't be changed at a future time, but I think that it's important that we have some of this on file moving forward. If it is to be changed at a later date, that's fine. None of this is ever permanent, as you know. It can be changed, but it could take six months, it could take a year. You could be discussing this with Planning and Zoning and the Board of Education until, you know, 2019. And between now and then, we should have something legitimately on the books, in my opinion.
No, and I value your opinion, and I would say this. I understand the necessity to codify. I would be prepared to codify on the 25th. I just want to take that step to acknowledge that by not acting today, we recognize there's a broader problem. We want to find out a little bit of the history and emphasize that even if we do codify, it's not satisfactory to us in the long term, in the long term. I think so that's why I don't want to act today. Obviously, if the other two gentlemen.
Let me bring it back on the 25th potentially.
Right, definitely. I would say definitely on the 25th, but I think otherwise, we're not going to get the response that we are desiring.
Well, just to be clear from my standpoint, I would not codify today. I'm not committing to codifying on the 25th either. I am reluctant, just so you understand, even though I truly understand your point, I am reluctant to legitimize something that I think is not the right thing. And we're sitting here and saying it was a clerical mistake. I don't know, and none of us knows the history, so I think.
Well, I do. I have it in my office.
Well, I don't, and then I have to vote for it, so I can't. I agree with the first selectman. We can think about it. Let's find out what we can do between now and the 25th, and perhaps on the 25th we can act, but I'm just saying, as for myself, I'm not committing to that.
No, that's fine, but I need to know if we're bringing it back or not on the 25th. So I will bring it back on the 25th.
Please, yeah, I would say put it back on.
Okay.
And John, we don't mean to ignore you. What are you thinking? Hello?
What am I thinking? I'm thinking that the Board of Education runs the largest transportation system in the town of Greenwich, and I would like to know, and this is an appropriate time when you're looking at the budget, how much do we put aside for bus services to the town school and how effective or how used the buses are? It seems to me that we're running around in circles.
Okay, well, we'll endeavor to get an answer to you for that by, we'll reach out to the board's transportation office.
And, I mean, if I could just also say, obviously, that is a question that came up when we were doing this interdisciplinary group. And the high school's not the only school that has parking and traffic issues. We visited, you know, several schools as part of that group. To be fair, yes, the high school is the largest school, and it has the most students and certainly the most activity, but it's by no means the only school that has problems. And also, to be fair, it probably, you know, as mentioned by the residents that are here today, has traffic and parking issues at times that the other schools do not because of the nature of the activities at the high school, right?
And the ages of the kids, I would guess.
Certainly. I mean, most schools, you know, and even at the high school, the core problem is that the morning drop-off and the afternoon pickup. The high school does experience problems at other times because of activities, but that's when it's really at its worst. Every other school, that's when it's at its worst, and then it usually, you know, goes away in the middle of the day and on the weekends. The bus transportation is something that did come up when we were at the high school. There are a number of buses that are there every day. We were watching the kids that get on, the kids that get off at the different times of day. I certainly can tell you that as far as our interdisciplinary group goes, you know, if there was a magical way to get kids to take the bus, we would all be thrilled to find it. As of yet, nobody seems to know what that is. And to be honest with you, taking away student parking isn't going to put them on the bus. What that will do is it will put more of them in cars that other people are driving and dropping them off from and picking them up with, which will just add to the traffic problem and potentially resolve some of the parking issues, but it's not going to put them on the bus. It's just not. I mean, there's, historically, you know, high school kids don't want to ride the bus. And we have this problem even at our elementary schools. Kids aren't on the bus. So, you know, I mean, from a traffic standpoint, I would love it if we could find a way to get them all on the bus. Those who are eligible, you know, that would be fantastic. But I do know that we did talk about it, so you know, it's not something we're unaware of, but as of yet, none of us know how to fix it.
Great, you know, thank you. And I know you've been very thorough and diligent in this, really. Yes, what?
Just super quick, on that point, I actually do disagree, and I would point to Greenwich Country Day as a model where they worked on getting all the families and the parents to change their minds and not do drop-off, and they did successfully get the majority of the population, it was a concerted effort, to explain to parents, "We know you want to drop off," and to get them onto buses. So the idea that we're supporting students where the concept is, I have two boys who grew up in Greenwich, it's not cool to ride the bus. It's not cool. But I, as a taxpayer and as a resident, would suggest that you look into it because budgets are tight and you guys are funding a lot of buses that are generally half-empty, and just to give up and say, "They'll never ride the bus," I think that's where the politicians in the town needs to take a stand and say, "We pay for this, and you can do it." I mean, I think that's throwing your hands up. I think you could look at that.
Great, thank you. Number three on there is Sound Beach Avenue. This is the one that references the Penn Central Railroad.
This, again, is an interesting code correction. This particular request is actually for a deletion in advance of some proposed work in the neighborhood. A local developer called us and said, you know, "We're looking at the on-street parking regulations for this particular place, and it's in the book two different ways with totally different meanings," right? So this is in the ordinance book as the same actual physical location as two-hour timed parking and also as a no-parking zone, which obviously makes no sense. We figured out the correct answer is, and what it's actually signed as now is a no-parking zone, and all this is doing is, you're not even adding the no-parking zone. All you're doing is deleting the contradictory older two-hour parking.
So it will be a no-parking zone?
Correct. It's already a no-parking zone and two-hour timed parking.
So can we move this one, gentlemen?
So move.
And last.
John, you there?
I'm here.
Okay, so.
Did I miss something?
Yeah, we're looking for a second.
Fair. Something needs to give. I'm not sure why students who have their transportation paid by the taxpayers have more rights to Hillside Road than do the residents, but that's certainly a question that needs to be asked. I do think we need more long-term situations for parking and traffic. I would support a parking situation and drop-off situation on the post road because Hillside cannot handle the activity and the number of cars and the parking and traffic violations that are daily. And also, the activity level at the high school has become overwhelming for us as residents, as there are more games because we've turfed the field, so they're in constant use, so there's constant traffic, constantly. Even on the weekends, when you'd think we'd have a break on Sundays, there's a church service with 1,000 people coming in on a Sunday. We don't even get a break on Sundays. So I'm asking you, as selectman, to please consider the quality of life for our neighbor. We have endured so much. Misa, toxins, everything. Surely, something can happen that's positive for the neighbors of Greenwich High School. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I, oh, and never to say that I think we're very cognizant of the issues that you're facing and that we recognize that there are other elements of the government that we will be required to talk to to get a better understanding and try to come up with some tenable solution. There's no disputing what you're saying. I've viewed it myself, particularly driving down the opposite lane to get through, having made the mistake of going down one morning. So we will confer and communicate. Perhaps we can draft a letter from our board. I'm just thinking out loud, enumerating some of these things that we're looking for. Feedback.
Yeah, no, I think we can do that. I'm particularly struck by, in addition to the other things that were said, but of the things that were said, I'm particularly struck by two things. One, I guess is paramount to my mind, and that is the safety issue. I mean, that's really a serious question. I mean, that's a darn serious question. The other is a quality of life question, which I also am obviously sympathetic to, as are you. So I think we ought to draft something and we ought to try to really put it in context. And it may be more than P and Z. I'm not exactly sure where it goes, but wherever it goes, I think we have to take it.
Yeah, but I do think your suggestion, and again, it's still in its infancy, a lot of things are ideas that get put out, but looking at reorienting with East Putnam in that area up there near the fields, I mean, people are already doing it, so it's not like it's novel. They're already parking there. Several years ago, I've gotten complaints because the people got ticketed, and justifiably they got ticketed, but they're doing it. They're using that area, so why not make it more conducive for that and, you know, have a pressure valve for Hillside? So those are many of the elements of this that.
The other thing we ought to think about, and maybe Mark can even talk to it now, is the police presence there and what they're doing or not doing, and what they could be doing or should be doing to help alleviate the situation as it currently exists. Because whatever we do, it's not going to change tomorrow morning. So in the interim, I'm wondering, is there something, Mark, that the police can or should be doing? And I'm sure you've talked to these ladies and others about it, and so what can we do?
We do endeavor to enforce over there pretty regularly. I mean, we can't maintain a presence there 180 days a year, 184 school days, something like that. I know at the start of the year, we were there pretty much every day. I mean, we do write no mean amount of violation tickets for no stopping, standing on the east side there.
How about the guy who's sitting there every day for half an hour to, what I'm going to tell the buses they need? Could he, could he before that the buses leave, could he at least point out the situations where they're repressed before, you know? I know it's, you have them.
Absolutely. I mean, you're right, if we're.
We're getting a low return for our police hour.
Right, we're not using our time wisely. Yeah, the guy is sent there to, or gal, is sent there to pull the buses out, to stop cars on Hillside Road, to assist the buses coming out.
All the double parked parents.
Well, I mean, again, as a practical matter.
He sits there for half an hour before he goes like this, and that's what he does, and he gets back in the car.
We got you using the buses, not just here, but it's really.
It's an outrage. I mean, some kids may have a job, all those kids.
Can you use the microphone, please? Can you use the microphone, please?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry to mark up.
My suggestion would be that the person who's letting go of the buses, who is there beforehand to, by the way, sit in visitor parking and get that spot, he could use that time to at least point out the worst of the egregiousness. Because literally, policeman came and said, "Could we provide you buckets to put flowers to close up your driveway so that people aren't turning around? Would you mind doing that for us?" I'm like, "But how about using the guy who sits there for 20 minutes doing nothing until he goes like that, and then he goes back in?" That's all. So you do have a guy sitting there every day.
Well, I mean, certainly we can endeavor to better task that patrolman. He works for a different division than mine. I can put on my police hat for a minute and call Captain Gray and make sure he gets out of the car and kind of does a better job. That said, you still kind of have the 10 pounds of parking and five-pound bag problem, right? You can move those people along. It doesn't solve the problem of the fact they still have to somehow affect getting their kids in the car. So if they don't do it in view of the guy who's there waiting to pull the buses out, they're going to do it around the corner or some other inopportune location that, I mean, there's.
It doesn't solve the problem, Mark, but let's not throw out the good for the perfect. If it helps, let's do it, if we possibly can.
Well, and interestingly, I'm not entirely sure that it does help because, you know, we, people have a tendency to work things out the best, safest way that they can, and usually people are kind of reasonably intuitive about what the best way to accomplish those things are, right? And they're not going to stop 90 degrees across the road and block both lanes and wait for junior to come out of the high school. They're going to kind of get out of the way as best or as most of the ways they can. But you're right, I don't want to make excuses of any stretch of the imagination. I don't want to say that we're going to tolerate unlawful behavior. So, okay.
But I think if you did, as you suggested, put on your police hat and see if you can prod them to be a little more proactive instead of just sitting there, that would be helpful.
Did they say you're always supposed to be there? I'm not. I'm not trying to shade any of the policemen. This is what they've instructed to do, and they told you, "Please, all I'm instructed to do." And so that's why I have talked about in the past, the policeman, like, "Please instruct them also to do the signage that you have put on the street or that you've actually come and sat in my living room about." That's why I'm saying, I'm not trying to say they are doing what they want to do. So I'm not, I just think the policy of what that, how that 25 minutes could. So I'm not, I just think the policy of what that, how that 25 minutes could be.
Acknowledged. The point's well made. We'll see that's communicated. We want to advance to number three, Sound Beach Avenue.
Can I just make one more comment about Hillside Road?
Sure.
Understanding that you want to put together something to have a conversation with planning and zoning, and I think that makes sense from your perspective. But here's what I would say. As you well know, signing an ordinance today to codify what is out there and what is actually happening doesn't.
Bring in work up there?
Yeah, we can make arrangements to deliver a package to them.
Before tomorrow.
Are you leaving?
Breaking out?
I'm breaking out.
Okay, so there, number two.
Number two.
Is.
Hillside Road.
Is concerning Hillside Road. As I acknowledged at the outset of the meeting, we received several inquiries about this and concerns. And I recognize Ms. Cole and Ms.
Elizabeth Dempsey.
Elizabeth Dempsey, welcome. And as I said, once the item is presented, if you have any questions, comments, I'll entertain them in part of the meeting. So.
So in response to, and really, this started with the school time change. What are you going to hand me? With the school time change, this is just a sort of a graphic representation of what we're proposing to put up there. Actually, not even proposing to put up, when they codify it, it's already existing.
So they could see it.
The high school currently, the change in start time has created some special challenges with respect to traffic and parking, and the neighbors in particular and people that kind of have to drive in the area of the high school. This has caused a lot of work on a lot of different town departments' part to try to improve things there. And I think we've, you know, between police and DPW, we've been able to come up with some good ideas in parking and get some stuff done. But one of the things that's come to light is, and kind of one of the things that's our standard operating procedure, when people come to us with problems, we say, well, you know, what's the existing circumstance and what are the existing rules? So we go to the town code online and we look, and we see that there's all of these things that exist out on Hillside Road with respect to parking signage and stuff that's actually not in the current code. It was at one time. We can't find any record of action by the Board of Selectmen to take it out, but it's not currently in the code. So there's a long stretch of permit parking for the high school. It used to be marked with something called a J permit back in the 1990s, and that was when the high school apparently used to issue separate permits to seniors and juniors. And now they issue just a single permit document to all students who drive, which is a student permit. But originally, back in 1991, the street, again, consistent with action by the Board of Selectmen, was posted for J permit parking, and they used it that way for many years. Ultimately, the use of the parking out on the street in this area as student parking associated with the high school was, became part of, and most of what it is, 1995 is the P and Z approval? There's a 1995 Planning and Zoning Commission approval that, for the Science Wing project, if you remember that, predates MESA, is kind of the last big construction project at the high school before MESA, that recognizes this parking as part of the full parking count for the high school property. Do you have the actual language?
I have.
I'll just read it for you so you guys have it.
It's in a couple of different places, but.
This is from, this is a December 26, 1995 Planning and Zoning approval document for that Science Wing project. Just, where's the part that says considered part of?
I gotta find it.
This discusses a lot of parking-related issues all over the high school property.
Okay, so there's this one here, but then also this one here. Me there.
Okay. So this says, right on the very first page, whereas the commission finds that the high school will have an increase to approximately 770 parking spaces, including spaces on Hillside, they say, avenue, when the construction and redesign and circulation parking is completed and the street spaces are considered an essential element of the school's inventory of parking to meet anticipated demand with the projected increase in school enrollment and faculty and staff and the overall increase in spaces and the busing of students coupled with the school's strict parking management program should assure parking adequacy into the future. So they sort of, Planning and Zoning, at least in 95, recognized this parking as, and it was, again, since 91, posted as student permit parking out on the street. And then they also put an additional condition in this approval, which is number actually 20 on page three, that says, "Any future proposal to eliminate or severely cut back any additional parking on Hillside Avenue will require revised site plan review by the Planning and Zoning Commission to determine adverse effects, if any, on the ability of the school to handle parking and transportation needs of the students, faculty, guests, et cetera. Street spaces are considered by the commission to be part of the school's required parking inventory." So it's pretty clear that the existing parking is parking that's associated with the school. Now, the street has had, also for many years, no parking on the east side, and this student parking in the area immediately adjacent to the school, this permit parking, it's signed as such. We just can't find any evidence of it in the current code as it exists today. Again, it was put in there in 91, old paper copies pretty consistently through the 90s and 2000s. If you can, you know, run around to the various town departments and find old paper copies of the code, clearly have this, this parking as permit parking. All this Hillside Road proposal is today is, again, a codification of the existing circumstance that's out there and has been out there since 1991 with one exception. And that one exception is that there's an area, and it's the green area on your map here, there's a green area that is currently posted and apparently has been posted since 91 as visitor parking only. No one really has a good idea what that means. I think everyone assumes that it means high school visitor parking. There's no time restriction on it currently, and if parking enforcement officers or police officers go there and we find a car parked there, there's no real way for us to deter. It's not like the high school issues a visitor parking permit or other document, and there's no good definition of what visitor parking is. We can accomplish what the high school wants, which is short-term parking in the area by just simply resigning it to two-hour timed parking. So it becomes public parking available for anyone to park in, you know, two hours at a time. And it sort of takes away the ambiguity, ambiguity associated with what is an actual, you know, visitor parking. I don't see any good way to enforce a visitor parking only restriction. Two-hour parking is just much, a much simpler way to handle the situation. So this proposal does include modifying the code to make that 100 feet or so of parking into, from visitor parking, which doesn't exist in the code period, to two-hour timed parking, which is like every other two-hour space in town.
How many spaces would you estimate it'd be? Maybe you said.
So are we back on?
We resume the meeting. Is there a motion to return to public session?
So moved.
Okay, without objection, 1251. The board only discussed one item during executive session. That was a settlement of a workers' comp claim, and for purposes of resolution, I'm going to call upon our board secretary, Ms. Heinz.
This is to settle claim number 9814502136 with a full and final settlement of a labor commissioner's recommendation of a figure of $249,727, which is inclusive of the approved Medicare set aside of $57,727.
Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
So moved and seconded, and to note, this is a full and final settlement with release. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That concludes the business before the Board of Selectmen today. Our next regularly scheduled meeting is for Thursday, January 25th. Motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Without objection. 1253.
Eventually, that information gets transmitted somehow to Immunicode, and they update the actual code. But is that online document, is Immunicode the copy of record? Or are the paper copies of things that they have in the law department the actual copy of record? I don't know the answer to that question.
Well, we should endeavor to get that answer today, when they come in, because.
We can sort of figure out the way things are supposed to be based on kind of three data streams, right? One is what exists in real life. Two is the minutes of this board, which we can go back and look at for a long time, and Melissa's looked at a bazillion of them. And the files of the law department and the files of the Department of Public Works, because they maintain what they call a street file, which is a file for every single public street entity in town where there's all kinds of information about what happened on that street, you know, work orders for paving, including regulatory changes for not only parking regulations, but also traffic regulations. And the Department of Public Works Engineering Division has a pretty good handle on traffic regulations. There are some discrepancies, not nearly as many as there are on parking. And without trying to blame anyone else, there have been times when I wasn't in charge of the Department of Parking Services, where we weren't 100% good, apparently, on making sure that those parking approvals either came to this board or then made it into the appropriate long-term receptacles for filing of this information, right? So sometimes, you know, we can go to the record and find that the board approved things that don't live in engineering street files. Sometimes there are signed ordinances in the street file, but then they never made it into the municipal code. So, yes, part of the long-term process has to be assigning exact responsibilities for every step of this process.
So again, with the, with the exception of the two where the snow is piled, and I'll come back to those in a minute, there are no handicap parking signs in any of these spots? Is that correct?
Oh, no. Well, not completely. Like, one of the ones that we're adding in the schedule today, believe it or not, there's apparently no signed ordinance for, it was Mark, this is another one that, again, shortly after I made it downstairs, I got a call from a guy who lives on High Street and said, you know, eight or nine years ago, I called the Department of Parking Services and asked them for a park, a handicap parking space because I, you know, I became wheelchair-bound. And the doctor gave me this handicap parking permit, and they came down almost right away, and they painted some lines in the ground, they put a box in the ground and a thing. But I, and it's, now it's eight years later, and the thing's kind of faded and worn. How do I get it painted again? And it would also be good, I see some of the handicap parking signs have a sign. And I've never had a sign here. I've just had this box painted on the ground in front of my house. Well, to actually be enforceable, state statute requires that you need to have an above-grade sign, it's got white letters and a blue background, it's got to have the little guy in a wheelchair picture on it and the whole thing. Just painting on the ground is not enforceable as a handicap parking space. And that's been working for the guy in there for eight years, and the town was responsible to his request. He's not mad at us. But when he calls me and I then look in the ordinance book and say, sure, Mr. Number 11, High Street, oh, wait a minute, that's, that's not even in the book. Well, we found out that it was approved by the Board of Selectmen, never made it into the code, doesn't exist in her street file, but there's a legitimate need for the space. It's been existing down there. I'm happy to, direct DPW to go put the correct sign up, but I have an ordinance that goes with it. So that's an example of one, whether it's not currently a sign, or we're going to put up a sign, or there is something, there's paint on the ground.
But all the rest of these where you're seeking to take it away, there are no signs there, correct?
Um.
Just trying to understand what we're doing here, or what you're proposing we do.
Well, again, we can cert, we absolutely can go through the list one at a time.
No, I don't want to go through the list one at a time necessarily, but I just want to be comfortable that what we're talking about is there are no signs, there is nothing there, all we're doing.
Number eight on this?
All we're doing is conforming reality, which is, it is not a handicap parking space, with the code.
Okay, number, number eight on this list is, so there's North Side Vicinity House number 57, one space is posted in Mark. That's a removal. That was installed, believe it or not, at the, years ago, at the request of the wife of our own comp patroller, who we called, and he said, no, we don't need that space anymore. So we, I mean, there, the residents aware that's going to go away. Nobody parks in it currently, so that's, that's one example of where a sign's going to come down. Lake Avenue, South Side Vicinity, House number 22, which is actually now owned by the Greenwich Hospital Association, there's, believe it or not, public parking on Lower Lake Avenue, sort of across the street from the ordinance room entrance and 49 Lake Avenue. There's a handicap space there that was originally installed for a resident of a house, which is now owned by the hospital association and is like their business office. So the, and that, that space is empty every day, that we surveyed it, so we're going to remove that and just restore it to the regular public parking that's available on the street. That's number 14 on your list. And the only other one that's, that's, that's a removal, but is actually a replacement with a relocated space is the one on Pemberwick Park. There's a, there's a, again, one of the ones that's made it into the book, or made it onto the street, but not into, into real life. There's a marked handicap space on the south side of Pemberwick Park, immediately adjacent to, on Mosher Street, very near the corner of Pemberwick Road. The problem is, there's no actual handicap accessibility to the park there because there's no curb cut. There is a, kind of a hole in the fence or the stone wall there, but you can't actually, you have to jump over the wall or jump over a chain. The Parks and Rec Department maintains a chain across the entrance driveway, so no handicapped person can actually access the park at that location. If the chain wasn't there, it would make, maybe make sense to have the handicap parking space there. There's a much better spot to relocate it around the corner, actually out on Pemberwick Road, adjacent to what's the correct handicap parking for the park. So that space, we're going to move. So that'll involve taking down an unauthorized sign and moving it to a new authorized location. But so with those three exceptions, no signs come down.
Okay, the reason I was asking the question is, putting those three aside for a moment, the rest is just conforming, so nobody is impacted. And my question then is, with respect to those three, is anyone impacted that you have been able to determine? Is anyone being harmed in any way by this or losing a spot which they want?
No. In fact, we're codifying the spots that they're currently using.
Just want to make sure no one's being impacted by it.
Thank you, thanks.
No, we were especially sensitive to that. We stopped and we talked to people and to the point where we get ahold of people that were still around, yes. There were many more on our list that are going to continue, that are now being actually permanently codified in here because they existed, we stopped, we knocked on a door, and somebody said, oh, yeah, you know, I park there every day. I'm here and I'm handicapped.
Great. John, do you have any questions on, this is number one, the handicap person's parking?
No, this is fine.
Okay, is there any? Okay, is there anyone who has a comment on that question in the audience on the handicap? If not, we need to entertain a motion to approve these amendments as presented.
I'll, I'll move with respect to the handicap, yes.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Do you want us to...
We have to hold it and get it to sign it at some point, aren't we? I can get somebody to take it to Withersall. Got pens up there. The date will be right.
I'm putting today's date because they approved it today.
Somebody missed it. Yeah, how many, about, just 10?
I mean, it's 130 feet.
130 feet, 18 feet a car, so 15 spaces, round numbers.
And do you know, and this may be beyond...
No, that's wrong.
It's about four parts.
Yeah, I was thinking 10, but that's, yeah. so right now, if you live on Hillside, because parsing through the various comments, it's safe to say that it, I go visit someone on Hillside. They say, "Well, park on Hillside." It's between the hours prescribed, school hours. I cannot do that presently, correct?
Yeah, I've been doing that since 1991.
Since 91.
Right.
But prior to 91, you could.
Technically, you can park in visitor parking because nobody knows what that means or if that's a code. It doesn't even say Greenwich High School is a visitor.
Okay.
This sign just says visitor parking. So if you're visiting someone on Hillside, technically, you're a visitor. But realistically, it's very open. No.
Right, and the, and the right side of the street has been parked, has been posted, either no park, the west, east side, no parking, or now, we experienced a, a problem and actually had a very serious injury accident to a student that was discharged on the east side of the street by, like, a parent dropping him off. It's actually another student, but he dropped off several students and they were running across Hillside Road and not in a Mark Crosswalk, one of them was struck. So probably five or six years ago now, maybe more, they put, they, they took what had been no parking on the east side of the street and posted it, "No parking, stopping, or standing," in an effort to get people to, encourage people to discharge passengers on the correct side of the street where the school is. So, but prior to that, it had been posted, "No parking," so.
But putting, putting aside for a moment whatever was done or wasn't done in 1991, since we're a long way away from that now, I, I guess it's a simple question to me. Why shouldn't the residents be allowed to park on the street on which they live? Why is that reserved for the students? I mean, what, what special claim do they have to it?
The, I don't know. There are plenty of places where we either disallow parking or, you know, make other parking available. If you live on, you know, Greenwich Avenue or Shore Road in Old Greenwich, you can't park on a street. There are plenty of places.
Yeah, no, but you haven't, I say you, I don't mean you personally.
No, I understand.
But that's not what's been done here. What's been done is not that you've said, "No parking." That would be one thing to anybody. You said, "No, we're going to allow parking. It's okay, but only for this special group, these kids. You can't park there, only these kids." Why?
And if you guys wanted to change that, it's certainly...
Well, no, they can't.
Well, you, there'll be some steps. One of them would be deciding who's going to ask planning and zoning permission to change the condition.
Yeah, let me be clear. I'm not suggesting necessarily that we change it or not change it. I'm asking you a question, just so I can understand the logic, to the extent you understand it, behind why this is set aside only for the kids and the property owners aren't allowed to park there.
I'm, I'm sure that in 1991, nobody cared, for whatever reason.
There were a lot less cars.
As a practical matter, most of the houses on Hillside Road currently have large driveways and large properties and much more parking accommodation than probably many homes in Greenwich, quite frankly, right? If you live in Pemberwick or Glenville, you may have your own driveway that you can park one or two cars in. I don't know that there was ever the push to have available public parking on the street. And in fact, the north part of the street, away from the high school, both sides are posted, "No parking," because people, the problem with public parking is it's public parking. People get to park in it, right? So if this were not reserved for students, then anybody could park there. Other students, students without parking permits could park there. The Chicken Joe's truck could park there. You know, anybody could park there.
Does the high school have a total number of permits they issue? And does it rec, can we find out if it reconciles with the spaces that are afforded? Because Melissa, you mentioned about the zoning approvals, which is a smart thing. To, just to have an overview, okay? When they got approval for the science, they had to get so many spaces. They got approval for MISA, they had so many spaces. How many of them are student? What's the number on the roadway? And how many do they issue? Are they overissuing? I mean, I don't think we know.
I don't think zoning has ever discussed the actual number of permits issued. There are numbers in the MISA approval for kinds of parking, but... I'm sorry?
I said, "Do you like how my voice changed?" You were asking me a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, go ahead.
Tom Babkowski knows exactly how many permits are issued, how many spaces are available and allocated to students versus faculty and visitor parking. One of the things that we started doing in the spring of 2017 that we've been working on since then was we formed kind of an interdisciplinary group between Tom and his office, the Police Department of Parking Services and DPW to look at some schools where we had some identified traffic and parking enforcement issues. The high school was one of them. It's my understanding, and again, I don't have the specific numbers, but one of the things that Tom has said to that group many times is that they actually don't issue as many permits as the students would like them to. They issue a very small amount compared to the number of kids who drive. And they have a process through which you can obtain a permit that they feel is fairly strict. You have to maintain a particular grade point average and things like that. Again, the specific number, I don't know. What I can tell you, just anecdotally, from the reviews that we've done, both in the spring and then again in the fall of 2017 after the start time changes, is that certainly, all of the kids who have permits are using that, that parking. It is definitely full on the street and in the student parking lots where they're designated as student parking. Yet to go there, whether it be morning, midday, or afternoon, and find, you know, a lot of empty spaces. The only place that there tend to be some empty parking spaces throughout the day is the northernmost lot. At the very northern end of it, there are some occasional empty spaces. But for the most part, the high school is fully parked.
Melissa, if you don't mind, I'm just asking a follow-up question. Maybe Peter knows the answer to this. What, because you commented earlier, what is our role in this, that is the board? By that, I mean specifically, you chimed in and said, "We can't do something," which is fine, I'm not insulted. I'm just trying to understand. What is our role? What can we do? What can't we do? What would we have to do if we wanted to do something?
So with regards to actually changing that parking allocation from student to regular public parking, because planning and zoning needed a condition of that site plan approval, that it would have to go back to planning and zoning? That's what would have to occur. So it would have to go back to planning and zoning to convert it from student permit parking to regular public parking. What, what you can do, which is what we're asking for today, is actually codify the existing signage that's out there, which is in support of the one signed ordinance that we could find from 1991, which made it permit parking, and the existing 1995 planning and zoning approval, which made it part of the parking inventory for the high school. So really, those signs have been there. All we're trying to do, and, you know, to be honest with you, I mean, again, I've gone through the whole high school file that I have in Public Works. I've gone through the Hillside street file. I've gone through all the papers.
This is something that is part of the Green, Connecticut Greenleaf DEP program. And again, it's all part of the conservation commissions and the school's efforts to promote sustainability and environmental stewardship. The Capital Improvement Project Committee will be holding a public hearing this evening at 6:00 in this room. The hearing really will focus on taking comments on what is referred to as the draft capital improvement budget for the 2018-19 year. I can tell you that based upon the discussions in the committee, there's primarily just a couple areas of focus in terms of allocation of resources. They do center around prioritizing improvements to various fields, one of them being tuffel over in Byram, which is a lit field, as well as the school's intention to do some improvements to the stadium project. I would characterize these as somewhat separate and distinct from the lighting, because some of this will result in upgrade to sidewalks, bleachers, and things that will exist. In addition, discussion occurred concerning replacement of carpet at Field 6 and 7. Those are fields that were put in place, I believe, in 2005. And our indicators show that they're coming on their useful life. So we need to think about allocating money so that we could begin that process. And we've been lucky to have a guy like Tim Coughlin give us good insights as to timing. So that's really been one of the vocal points. Of course, there's been considerable feedback from residents on not only the high school, but Central Middle School. There has been funds in the past to look at whether we turf, whether it's western, central, eastern. Again, the schools have care, custody, and control of those properties. Ultimately, they have to tell us when they would like to advance these, but giving you a little bit insight into what's the hot issue for the year. On January 19th, I just want to give a shout out, because this is somewhat unprecedented. Our own Department of Public Works Commissioner, Amy Seibert, is being honored with the Greenwich YWCA Bravo Award. She is the first ever municipal or government official to receive the award. And I do know that the Y has been gracious enough to lower the luncheon fee for those who wish to attend or are part of the municipal government to $150. I believe 70 of that is tax deductible. But hopefully, we'll get a nice show of support to honor Amy. She's certainly a very earnest and hard-working civil servant. Coming up, a meeting that I think all three selectmen will be attending, or at least, John, the two of us, I don't know. You may not be mobile yet. But the first is a series of public workshops for community input for the 2019 POCD. I believe that is taking place. Barbara, the date was not referenced on the update sheet, but is it next Thursday, the 18th? Just want to get that out there.
First Wednesday, the 17th.
Okay, just to, just to enumerate, it's next Wednesday, January 17th. It will be held at the Cole Auditorium at Greenwich Library. And I believe it begins at 7:00. I would encourage folks interested, not only to attend, but to get there early to ensure a good parking spot. This is an important process in terms of developing stakeholder input into the next 10-year plan. And it's one that our Director of Planning, Katie DeLuca, has been working in earnest on with Housel and Levine, which is the firm that was contracted to undertake development of the plan. I know, Ken, you had reached out to our office and I think the Commissioner's office concerning notice that came out from the Governor's Office yesterday. We received word that the Governor has indicated that ConDOT, Connecticut Department of Transportation, will indefinitely postpone hundreds of transportation projects across Connecticut. Giving it a cursory look with the Commissioner yesterday, there are really only two projects that I can see that would have some impact. And one of them is the Oneida Drive Bridge over Smith Cove and then Sunshine Avenue over Binney Park Brook. These are projects that we typically get reimbursement on. So they need to be done irrespective of whether they're state funding or not. So I, you know, don't necessarily want to debate whether we get the funding or not. The fact is, we have to do them. And Greenwich, I think, has had the practice of stepping up when something needs to get done and pay for it. We could always argue about what money we get later. The other items that are mentioned that have Greenwich next to it, and I got to tell you, they're in very small print, so are with the New Haven Railroad, New Haven Line. So to give you some context, the COSCO bridge repairs, there are two allocations of funding, multimillion dollars. Those really would have direct impact to the work Metro North is anticipating to do in the rail line. Obviously of interest to us, because it impacts our constituents and impacts millions of people. But in terms of budget impact, I only, I only see two here. The three others that are referenced on the document that was distributed are all projects that have been completed and the dollar amounts are below $50,000. And I believe they're residual amounts that have to be closed out. So, Ken, I hope that helps you. And I believe that concludes updates. We are going to now take up old business, which is, we have had to make adjustments to our calendar of meetings. That was a result of, of course, passing this calendar sometime in the fall prior to knowing all the dates for the Regional Council of Governments. And now we're in a position to reconcile those dates. And Barbara, you put together a revised calendar. I entertain any comments or thoughts on it. Any, does someone want to make a motion to approve the revised Board of Selectmen 2018 meeting schedule?
Sure, I'll so move.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Noted on this calendar are the deadlines for submitting material to the board, and we appreciate the department's respect for that as we try to get the information out, posted, and then the public can see it. Under new business, we have presented to us today requests to update various sections of ordinance as it relates to parking. We are joined today by Captain Mark Kordick of the Greenwich Police Department, who is serving as interim director and overseer of parking services. For public information, Captain Kordick was the first director of parking services that the county has had. So he has quite a bit of knowledge as to the subject matter. And I turn the floor over to him. I also do want to acknowledge that we did receive several citizen comments concerning specific changes to Hillside. I believe there were at least four, and I see Ms. Cole here. And we welcome you. And, you know, at the appropriate time, if you do have a question or a comment, we'd certainly entertain it. So I'll let you perhaps give us the history or background of this.
The history and background basically is as follows. We've, since I started the Department of Parking Services last month, we've noticed a kind of an upsetting trend with respect to the lack of accuracy of certain parts of the town code as they relate, in particular to parking, also some traffic things. Most of them appear to be drafting or typographical errors. Some of them are due to changes. Some of them are due to changes, you know, historically, things that have occurred in town. An excellent example is, you know, there are still parking regulations for Bruce Place, which is described as running from Greenwich Avenue to Mason Street. Well, half of it now is the lobby of the new public safety complex. We took over the street to build the building 10 years ago, and never, you know, nobody had the foresight at the time to adjust the code and fix those things. There's a lot of, a lot of things like that, and really, we need to engage in a project, and, again, depending on what happens with the Department of Parking Services and how long my tenure lasts downstairs, at some point, whether it's me or someone else, is going to have to engage in a project to really start at the top of this and go to the end and fix things. In the meantime, however, there are certain things that come up just sort of as day-to-day operations, which really can't, there's no reason to cause them to wait for, you know, some global review of the entire code, which, again, desperately needs to occur. One thing that we have noticed, and it's sort of along the same lines, and a lot of these are the result of process problems. As you all know, and I'm sure someone has told Mr. Littback at this point, the Board of Selectmen is the local traffic authority for the municipality. So things that make it into the town code, that deal with parking and traffic issues on public streets or municipally-controlled property, are approved by this board and become the law fundamentally, when that occurs. There are many things that have been brought to the board historically, and I'm talking literally for the last several decades, that have been changed, altered, conditions have changed, you know, there's, one of my favorite things is even before, well, the first thing we're going to talk about today is changes to the handicap parking ordinance. Every single handicap parking space on a public street should be listed in that ordinance as, that's posted and enforceable as a real parking regulation. Private property handicap parking spaces are enforceable by the police, but under a different set of rules. But handicap spaces on public property have to be approved by this board and codified. There are many that are in the existing list, which we're hoping to fix today, that do not actually exist in real life. For whatever reason, over the years, they've been removed. Most of them have been put in at the request of a specific person who's gotten a handicap permit, and they don't have a driveway in their house, and they rely on on-street parking. Over the years, the municipality has reasonably maintained the practice of installing handicap parking spaces in places that they're needed. But then when these people move or pass away, you know, there's no good mechanism at this point to go back and take those out of the books. Sometimes they're self-enforcing, because the neighbors will call, and, you know, they'll know that Mrs. Jones passed away and doesn't need her handicap space anymore, and it's empty, and if it's in a place that there's a lot of pressure for parking access, they're quick to call and say, "We don't need that anymore," and it gets taken out of the book. But that's not always the case. One of my favorite things is there's still language in the parking code about a particular, and this actually predates the handicap parking law in Connecticut. There's a reserved parking part of the code that references a lady who used to live in Armstrong Court, and they made a reserved parking spot for what's identified in the code as her 1968 Dodge Coronet. Okay? Now, I'm pretty sure, I know she's not around anymore, and I don't think her '68 Coronet is either, but, I mean, that's in the municipal code, because it gives you an idea of the range of time that we're talking about some of these items. One of the things we're also going to fix today references the Penn Central Railroad Bridge over Sound Beach Avenue. The Penn Central Railroad has been in existence since 1976 as a business entity. So, without further ado, handicap parking. There are, there are in total about 31 changes to the handicap parking schedule. These are all things that we've verified. Most of them are spaces that do not exist. For whatever reason, they've been usurped by driveways or other spaces, they've, over the years. We went out and verified every single one of these in an effort to fix this. There's still a very small amount of work that needs to be done with respect to some of the handicap parking permits. We can go through these one at a time. If you want the individual explanation for each one, I see the first selectman shaking his head and saying no. We're not actually removing any, with the exception of two, and we anticipate those as being totally non-controversial, because they're both spaces that have had snow piled in them for the last couple of days, so, you know, we don't think that they're in regular use by anyone. There are some that we thought were not in regular use by anyone, where we stopped and knocked on the door and said, you know, "Is this person still around and need access to the space?" And they said yes, so we took, you know, those are going to remain in the code. There are many, many places where there's handicap parking all over town. And even, again, this is not an accurate list, these are kind of the low-hanging fruit ones that we know are not out there. And this, the handicap parking project started because, you know, about the day that I started downstairs, I got a phone call from a person that said, "I just bought the house at this location, and there's a handicap parking spot in front of it that was put in here for the previous owner, and, you know, we don't need it anymore, and we could really use the on-street parking. Can you remove it?" So I looked in the ordinance book, and it wasn't even in there at all. So that was an easy one to remove, right? That's also one of the things that's problematic, is there are a number of errors and omissions in the current code, that things that have gotten posted over the years, that either came here for approval, didn't make it into the code, or even, in some cases, didn't even make it here. We can't really find any evidence that they made it to this board for actual approval. Those are rare.
Mark, can I ask you a question? Is this anything more at this juncture than having the code conform with reality? Is that what you're doing?
With the exception of eliminating those two handicap spaces that still exist with snow piled up in them, no. But for handicap...
Yeah, I'm just talking about handicap, and put those two aside. Everything else, all you're talking about is having the code match the reality. Is that correct?
Yes. Correct.
In terms of process, which you led with, which is great, so, we routinely get things before us, we sign the documents, the three selectmen, then it goes somewhere.
Correct.
Files. Is part of it that it goes to legal? I'm just trying to understand, like...
Very much so.
And who in legal? Because I think what we want to know is, if legals, we're going to do something today, and we're going to sign it, goes to legal, we want to know it gets put in the code.
Well, there exists a significant question, at least in my mind, about, the town since 2012 has maintained the town code online with municipal code, right? And I don't think that every single thing that should have made it in there in 2012 made it in there, and I think that's part of the problem with catching up on some of this stuff. But I don't, to be honest with you, I don't have a clear understanding about what, and I'm sure the lawyers in the Law Department know, what is the actual official copy of record? If you sign this ordinance today, and I walk it down to the Law Department when we leave, and I give them the original document, and they put it in a file somewhere under municipal code, "for business only." That was put up 10 years ago, I'm not sure exactly why, Director Corey did it, but there's no definition of, I mean, it's legitimate 15-minute parking, but the "for business only" legend, nobody understands what that even means. Is it for business for the couple of businesses there? Is it for business of the UPS man who's delivering the house across the street? And it's, importantly, though, none of it's actually codified. There's no definition of what "for business only" is, and there's no record of this sign being actually in any way legitimate. So those are the kind of things that, you know, I pretty much know all the stuff it says in the 163 pages, so I drive around town, and I say, "That's the craziest thing I've ever seen." That's obviously not in the book, right?
Right. I think you should be sensing support from this board to go forward in what your endeavor is, and also, again, I would reiterate, if you feel you need resource to do it, and I mean resource, not only bodies, but funding to bring someone to do it, wholeheartedly support it, because ultimately, it's going to serve the town well, and it's going to protect the town, because, you know, people can challenge, as you've pointed out to me, if they were really ambitious when they get a violation, to make sure that it's compliant with what's in code, and if it's not in code, well, then they're not enforceable. So we can continue the conversation, and if you have a chance to percolate about it, but again, I sense we're supportive of what you're doing.
Okay. The fourth thing, too, is, she didn't mention, there's some places that, at least in my opinion, from a procedural standpoint, the code is incredibly weak. Like, we run this permit parking program, so eight or nine years ago, the Board of Selectmen approved language in the town code that says, "We're going to have a residential parking permit program, and it's going to affect the following streets." But that's pretty much all it says. It doesn't empower the Department of Parking Services to, like, make regulations to put that in place, or there's no rules that are clearly defined about how you get a permit, or who's eligible to get a permit, or what the definition of an actual resident is. So, you know, I see things like, well, gosh, I think that if I'm going to get a residential parking permit to park in a residential parking zone, that, you know, maybe my car should be registered to the address where I want to park it, because the town, I'm guessing, wants to collect the property taxes associated with having my car registered at that actual residential address. Well, I don't know that it's my call to make that rule, right? And it's not currently a rule, but those are the kind of things that arguably should be. But there are no rules defined, and nobody seems empowered to make regulations to actually run the program, so to date, they've been sort of running catch-as-catch-can kind of crazily. So, I mean, one of the reasons that, one of the things we're talking about is extending the current residential parking program, which is due to renew all the residential permits, March 1st, pushing that back to July 1st, letting people continue to use their, you know, current 2017 permits for four months to give us an idea of, a chance to sort of catch up and decide what we want to do with the program going forward. It's also unnecessarily complicated currently with a large number of zones that are miniscule in size. Most places that run residential parking permit programs have residential parking permit programs, but it's, you know, if you look at the city of Boston, they have a handful of zones that are giant-sized. So if you live in the zone, you get to park in the residential parking permit zone, if you can find a spot on your street, or the street, one street over, or this parking on the corner, it's a little more fair, and it's certainly a lot easier to administer with larger residential parking permit zones. It's kind of one-off, in some cases, a dozen houses on a street represent one residential parking permit zone, it doesn't make any sense.
Thank you for, no, thank you for your good work in endeavoring to reconcile all this. We appreciate it. And thank you.
Totally, yeah, thank you.
That's correct. Okay, item number six, appointments and nominations. We are endeavoring to get our arms around the number of positions that will be expiring. We were very thankful for a communication received from the nominations advisory committee, as well as from John Eddy, that provides us those specific positions that are up. One of the additional elements of this endeavor this year is that we are waiting for the RTM to complete the review and approval of changes to the expiration dates, but I anticipate Mr. Littback and I and Mr. Tonner, over the next couple of weeks, will be spending time interviewing people, and stay tuned for that.
Yeah.
Whoa, Peter, could I say something?
Certainly.
There is one nomination that's in place right now for P and Z. Can we move forward, the three of us, to consider that nomination, so that we can clear that out from last year?
In terms of, yeah, we don't have, so I should be clear, we don't have to wait to act, per se, on the spots, so long as we just reconcile what that term-ending date is. So if we agree that we want to do that, we could schedule a meeting, you know, next week, meet the people, and then, at our meeting on the 25th, vote. Does that answer your question?
With P and Z itself, I would like to see that moved forward very quickly.
Well, no, because essentially, we have been put on notice that the RTM could theoretically go forward and nominate and appoint someone themselves, because we've allowed the time to elapse, because we do not have a candidate. That position is an alternate position, but I, so, I don't think, I think we agree, we want to move on it. I think we have a number of names, but, John, we could schedule that. Are you, hate to put you on the spot, but you're mobile in the sense that you could theoretically be in the office next week, or?
Yep.
Okay.
I have to find a way to get there. Probably walking is not an option, but I could do it.
I told you.
How about running? Running work?
Running, you know, with the doctor, I think that is a good idea.
Sandy or I will come and pick you up.
Okay.
All right.
Jim Evie for me.
Okay. So that really, do you have anything on nominations?
No, that's fine.
Executive session, one of the things that we address as selectmen are settlement of claims. We have one workers' compensation claim issue that is before us today. We worked through the Connecticut Inner Risk Management Agency who oversees these, as well as their firm, and that woman who is going to be joining us, Heather Porto, will provide us the details. So at this time, we need a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of settlement of claims and a discussion of any potential, or pending litigation, emphasize pending litigation.
Yeah, so move.
Okay, without objection, that's at 12:23 PM.